Two times louder than the four. Wow.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Chairman Duppie.
Here, as well. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applicant, applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in section five point four point F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in section five point three point E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on May fourteenth. Our recommendations will, to the board, are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity, peculiarity, to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to a vacancy, six members are present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three and for an application will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is May first. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order sent forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of the board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I'll close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your head, raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do." Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, will you please call our first case of the evening?
Our first case is 2019 Z-13, 1913 Thornwood Avenue. This is a request for a two-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the installation of a six-foot tall solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, Jeremy Henrick, 1913 Thornwood. So, you've seen the letter we had submitted to you, but we're here requesting a variance to both the height and openness requirements, two-foot height variance and the openness requirement. And currently, the main issue, I guess, is really, given the busyness of Ridge Road, both with vehicles and really from a pedestrian perspective as well, it's a bit of a hardship using, kind of fully utilizing our backyard, just given how busy it is on that road there. And, you know, I believe that our proposal doesn't really prevent or present any sort of hardship to anybody in the surrounding neighborhood, any of the neighbors. We do propose putting the fence inside of the line of bushes, so it'll be kind of hidden even more so than it otherwise might be. It's also only in the backyard portion. It's not extending all the way up into the front yard towards Thornwood at the intersection of Ridge there. And then, I think really, you know, we looked at kind of other fences that have, either are in the rules already, or they had gotten variances in other parts of Willmet that seemed to be on similar busy roads, while there's not any directly on Ridge. And I think part of that is due to the fact that the vast majority of houses on Ridge face Ridge versus have their backyard or side yard face Ridge like ours does. Really, our house and the one right behind ours are one of the only ones that really have a big side yard like that facing Ridge. So there's not any other fences right there in the immediate vicinity, but there are a number of other fences. I think the closest ones are on Hunter, as are noted in the letter there. There's some on Hunter just north of Lake, and then a number on Willmet Avenue and Glenview Road down near the pool, the rec center, and some more on Hunter as you get further down there.
Okay. Do we have any questions for our applicant?
Couple. So, I see some of the photos were part of the letter, so it's going to be a normal solid fence, four-by-four posts, set in cement, right?
Yeah. I mean, we don't have, we certainly don't have the exact design yet, so certain, the fence, yeah, the pictures were something similar to that, is the plan.
And then, Lisa, it's my understanding that you could have a fence on your property, right on the property line, and they're going to set it back seven, eight feet?
Yes.
From the property line, okay. Is it a fence that needs a footer, that you're back four feet from property line?
Yes, if it's a wall, if you have a foundation on that, yeah.
So they're going to be back seven, seven feet, otherwise they could put it generally right on the property line. Okay, all right.
What is the purpose of having a solid fence there? What the reason?
So, the main reason is just blocking it from the traffic on Ridge Road.
Blocking, blocking the sound?
So, certainly some of the sound. Obviously, you know, we'll still hear it somewhat, but it'll provide some buffer from that. So the sound, and then certainly in the evening, just headlights going by as well. And then, there's a fair number of people, just pedestrians walking by with dogs as well, so just to kind of separate the yard from everybody that's walking by on the street.
So, you know, I, when I drove down Ridge and looked at all the houses on the west side of Ridge, which is the side of the street that you're on.
Yep.
There were two houses that did not have any fence along Ridge, and it was your house and the house across Thornwood from you.
Yep.
All right. Every other house has a fence, and every one of those fences is four feet high with at least 50% openness. So, can you, why is yours different than all those others?
Well, I think the setup of the houses is a little different.
But they all have, the reason they have fences is because they're delineating their yard areas from, from the sidewalk, similar to what you're explaining you want to do.
Sure, but I don't think most of those houses, they don't have the full backyard exposed to Ridge like we do. Most of them, the houses are, the houses are facing Ridge, and then the backyards are kind of separated from Ridge by the house. So there's some side yards, but it's, that's really the, my main thought process is, my full backyard is exposed to Ridge, which there's not many houses along Ridge that are set up that way.
A lot of those houses, the yards are on either side as they face Ridge, their yards are to the sides. Which, which is the street that, the two streets come together and meet?
Is it Beechwood and Kennelworth?
Beechwood and Kennelworth? That house that's on the north?
On the north side, dog.
Of that corner? Yeah, I mean, they've got the triangular piece, that's their yard, and then on the other side of their house, they have, and if anybody, you know, really had a complaint about street lights and, I mean, car lights and noise, you know, I mean, that would be the house that, you know, would really, to me, you know, be most impacted by what you're asking for relief from. I just, I, you know, I went and I tried to see is somebody turning off a street and there are lights, you know, coming across into your house. There's just nothing there. So, I was having problems kind of figuring out why yours is different than all these others. And I understand you're saying, "Well, it's my backyard. That's, that's our yard," but it's other people's yards too, and that's, they have the same, they're following the rules with the fencing. Are you, so are you?
My wife, yeah.
Then you may come up, absolutely, and introduce yourself so we have it on the record and feel free to express your...
My name is Deborah Henrick, and I live at 1913 Thornwood.
Sure.
I just wanted to say, so the house that you talked about directly across the street from us, also on Thornwood that faces Ridge, like you said, they have a small side yard where that fence is four foot.
They don't have a fence across Thornwood.
They don't have a fence there.
They just have bushes.
But I think what you're saying, their actual more utilized yard is on the other side of the house.
Yes.
That they have fenced in.
Their, their other side yard is very large, and that's what they utilize.
I dropped off my daughter at Nutria. I was driving up Ridge, taking a second look, and there were three kids playing in that part of their yard as I drove by their house.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we live across, that's funny, because that's the neighbor who asked us...
You certainly can utilize it, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I'm not going to tell you that we haven't utilized our backyard because we don't have a fence there. That's, you know, the reason we went through this and the reason we're going through the process is because it's, you know, there is a busy traffic on the road, you know, pretty continuously.
The other thing I would say...
That's what we're asking, we're asking about.
We, last night, had to pick up a ton of glass in our backyard. We have a dog that runs back there, and so with a lot of the pedestrian traffic on that sidewalk, having our dog outside, you know, a privacy fence, those glass bottles that are getting broken are still going to end up in our backyard and harm our dog and children. And that's a fairly regular occurrence.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for our applicant?
No, I was just going to say typically, you know, there would be a more of a reason, you know, not, every case is different. Everyone's looked at individually, but in the past, when we've approved ones like this, it's been where you're at the, I think we approved one on Ridge Road, and the headlights were going right into the house.
Illinois Road.
Or Illinois, yeah.
Illinois Road, yeah.
And it was a disturbance with the bright headlights and everything else.
Yeah, well, that backyard, that back corner of, what are those streets where that line is? Is it Greenwood and Kennelworth?
Where it goes into Kennelworth, though.
That, at night, we have a huge sliding glass door in the back of our house. I mean, it lights up our whole house on the inside, and same with our side window. It is...
But I guess...
As people are turning right off of that onto Ridge.
I guess from my viewpoint, it doesn't seem any different than all the other houses along there. And if you imagined, you know, the codes are here, we're here to interpret the codes and apply them.
Oh, yeah.
And apply them.
But I guess what we're saying is, right in that area, the houses around us, those houses are facing Ridge. They're not the side of Ridge, except for that one house that you were saying on Beechwood, and I have, you know, that's their choice.
But there's probably many, many similar streets to Ridge, you know. Illinois is another one, just as, you know, almost as busy. And we're here to interpret the codes. The codes were created to create a certain aesthetic along those streets and not a barricade as much.
Yeah, well, so then...
So I understand your point about wanting enclosure and everything.
Aesthetically, I don't know if this matters, but our house is also being resided in the next few weeks. That's getting done. So we've been, like, the house in and of itself, we're trying to make a lot of changes to make the whole area look nice, and that fence will be mostly hidden by the trees that are there.
Okay. Any other questions for our applicant? No? All right. Is there anything else you want to add before I ask if there's, okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case, and I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make the motion. All right, Mr. Coling, thank you. You guys can have a seat while this part goes on.
Move to recommend granting a request for a two-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the installation of a six-foot tall solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street at 913 Thornwood Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do you have a second? Mr. Boyer, second?
Yeah, you know, we get a lot of these, and it comes down to really more art than science, in my opinion. And, you know, I think what you're proposing is really going to be out of character for the neighborhood. And, you know, you can put the four-foot fence, and you can put, you know, taller shrubs or greenery up to create blockage for yourself, but I think having a stockade fence right there on Ridge, six feet high, when none of the other houses around there have it, I really think it doesn't go with the character of the rest of the neighborhood, and I can't support it. I don't think it meets the standards of review. I don't think there's an adequate hardship here to grant the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
So I'm going to go a different tack here. This kind of, for me, turns on where the fence is being placed. So as, as it's submitted, it's eight to nine feet inside the existing landscaping setback, wait, setback...
Inside the lot line.
Setback, sidewalk, eight to nine feet from the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, okay.
And then, seven to eight feet from the lot line. So, the way I, the way I look at these fence codes, if we have a, it really pertains to lots that are much narrower. This is a wide lot. If, if somebody wanted to put their fence 10 feet in on a 50-foot corner side, that reduces their total yard space considerably. Normally, that wouldn't happen. Someone's not going to put their fence 10 feet in. Since they're putting their fence, you know, almost 10 feet in from the lot line, and in this area, there is a little bit of a, beginning of a slope down in that, off of Ridge. And it is obscured by, you know, landscaping, bushes and trees. I don't think the fence is going to be that apparent, it's not going to be that pronounced as you drive down Ridge. I don't think you're going to see it. I wouldn't be in support if it was right on the lot line.
I just, I think you won't see it during the summer and fall.
Well, you won't see it as much. You'll still see it.
Right.
But, because it's, as it's setback, it softens the height overall. So, because of where it's being placed, that makes a difference to me, and I'd support it.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Mr. Schneider, here.
I think this kind of request, we have, I think, recall, granted it a few times, but it's been the exception rather than, than the rule. In this case, looking at the standards of review for fences, I think it meets three of the eight considerations. If, if you look at the northwest corner of Chestnut and Ridge, well, that house fronts Ridge, but their yard is south of the house. They have a, I believe, a four-foot wrought iron fence that is surrounded by very dense arborvitae, and it's very attractive. I just don't understand the need for a solid six-foot fence, not for security, certainly not for sound, I don't think. So I, I don't understand the hardship of why we need to make an exception here.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Mr. Sermon?
I agree with Mr. Schneider and Mr. Coling. I don't see a hardship, you know, I drove up and down that street, and there's a certain character to that area and to most of the streets of Willmet, and there weren't any examples that were similar. So I really don't see a, you know, a hardship either, so I can't support it.
Ms. Norick, anything you want to add?
I agree as well. I mean, for the, the roads don't really line up where you have, it doesn't seem that you have a huge issue with headlights, which was the only other thought that I had in terms of trying to screen from that, so.
Okay. Well, I, I expressed some of my thoughts. I agree with one of the main points that I took out of what Mr. Coling said, which was, you know, the character of the neighborhood, you know, nobody else has one. And I agree with that statement, that I think it would change it. Now, one thing that I tell everybody that, as I'm sensing, this is going to be a negative recommendation of the Village Board, Village Board overturns us a lot, all right? So they may see it in an entirely different way. So I really would encourage you not to give up what you're pursuing, but keep in mind, we are having to apply the standards of review more strictly to an applicant's request. And the Village Board has the right to overturn us and give you what you are requesting, so. Why don't we take a quick vote?
Mr. Coling?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No. No.
Chairman Duppie?
Chair votes no as well. So that's going to go as a negative recommendation of the Village Board. Their meeting's on May first, no, their meeting's on...
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. Our next meeting is May first. May fourteenth, in this same room. They start at seven o'clock.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. They, you will be able to re-present your case to them during that meeting, okay? So if I could ask you to come up, could you sign one of these in acknowledgement of your presence and also the dates, and take one with you and sign one?
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2019-Z-13.
Second.
About a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Ms. Roberts, when you're ready?
Our next case is 2019 Z-7, 500 Sheridan Road. This is a request for a 2.43-foot fence height variation to permit the installation of two 6.43-foot tall gates in the front yard.
Ah, okay. Well, welcome. Sure. And if you, if there's anything that you want, we've got an overhead projector right there.
I have all these drawings.
Okay.
Just easier to look at.
Sounds good.
I'm Scott Byron, Scott Byron and Company. I'm a landscape architect.
Welcome again.
For 500 Sheridan, thank you. My address is 30088 North Skokie Highway in Lake Bluff. You have everything, all the packet, I'll just quickly go over it. There are two gates. One is a service entry gate on the north side of the property, one is the main gate on the south side. The middle portion, we are not asking for a variance, that'll be a four-foot fence. That area is heavily and densely landscaped so that to help secure, no, make it beautiful and to help security, keep people out of the property being tempted to jump in and go to the lake. Of course, at the two driveways, that becomes impossible, so we would like to ask for the six, it's actually a six-foot tall gate. I guess the 2.43 comes from a distance, the gate is off of the driveway. The, the design is classic in nature. It goes with the house, I believe. I did drive Michigan Avenue and Willmet, Sheridan Road and Michigan, and there are six houses with six-foot fence and gates along those two roads. Every house a little different, but I assume the purpose is similar. I don't need to tell you, there's a lot of traffic, both, especially pedestrian, but obviously vehicular traffic on Sheridan Road. And the owners are very desirous, just to make sure it feels like this is their property and, you know, it's really not an entrance to get down to the lake, even though you can see the lake, and it is kind of nice looking. So I'm pretty sure that's probably enough of a summary.
All right, anybody?
Would you mind just showing the gate so that the viewers...
Oh, sure.
Oh, so you know what, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you put it on the...
Here.
Okay, sorry.
I'm going to give you an assist here. This gold knob on the side of that podium?
Oh, here.
Yes, if you'll pull that out?
Yep.
Yeah. Give it, it's got a little work, this one's...
You've got to lay it flat. Just the gate. This, that's upset, actually. So, just to make clear, that the six-foot height is in the middle of that gate.
It's ultimately six, it starts at, at four feet, because that matches the gate that's going along Sheridan Road and then comes to a peak. This is a visual barrier. It's really not, it's not meant to feel like a fortress, it's not really meant to make a huge statement, a beautiful statement, I believe, but it's really meant to show that it's private property without really impacting the neighborhood and, you know, really saying stay out, so. And we, and I think by the landscape plan, you could also see, we spent a lot of time designing the gate as well as the landscape plan, to make it a beautiful piece of property.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I need you to speak into the microphones. I need you to speak into the microphones. The three people that watch at home can hear you.
I'm sorry. We certainly wouldn't want to disappoint them. So, the landscape plan is also meant to be a beautiful addition to the front, and we set the gates back quite a bit, so the visual impact on Sheridan Road for those going by is really minimal.
How far back are they?
The, the south gate is 37, almost 38 feet, and the...
Like seventeen?
A little over seventeen feet.
The service gate to the north is seventeen-ish.
The north gate is just four feet tall.
No.
No, no, no. The north gate is also the same height request as the six-foot gate.
Okay.
So the...
Because on here, I guess maybe it was highlighted out or something, it said 1.4 foot.
That's the, that's the typical fence elevation? Are you looking at 1.10?
Yeah, those are the typical, there is a...
If you look at 1.10, that's the, that's the gate for, oh, that's the pedestrian entry gate? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's pedestrian.
Yeah, and 1.9 is the service entrance gate, which is the northern gate, and it is six feet.
Yes. They're both, they're a matching design.
Yeah, and then...
And then it has six feet adjacent to it as well?
No, it's four.
All four feet.
Because it looks like on the drawing that there's a post, and to the right, it's the same height.
Yep.
The, the gate is, all the, all the fencing is four foot tall, and the gate, the post is, has to be six feet so we can hang, for strength, so we can hang the gate.
Okay, but here, off to the side, a little bit shows a six-foot fence.
Yeah, if you look at your bottom drawing there.
On 1.9...
Yeah, his...
I got it. Sorry.
That's incorrect.
That may be a design error, sorry.
A drawing error.
A drawing, or...
All right, are there any...
The fencing's all meant to be, and you can certainly put that a note in, but the fencing was at all times meant to be four feet.
So you're, you're saying that the reason that you need the six-foot gates, because the rest of the fence is four feet and conforming, is security?
Security. That's really what we're asking for.
All right. Do we have any other questions for our applicant? Okay. My, I'm just going to throw this at you. I mean, it's, it really feels more like this is about aesthetics as opposed to security. I mean, because you got four feet the rest of the way. Someone could easily climb that, push through the bushes.
I think it's visual security, so I would, I would, look, it obviously is an aesthetic moment. We want the house to look great, but it's because of the heavy planting everywhere else, we really felt that that was a visual barrier for anyone. Look, anyone can climb any fence.
Yeah.
This is more about just saying, look, this is really our property, and I think so. I think it's a visual security barrier as well, and of course, we wanted to make it aesthetically beautiful.
Doesn't really any kind say this is our property.
I suppose so, but a four-foot gate... If you drive by a four-foot gate, it really looks easy to hop, because there's something about a driveway and a fence, a gate going across. I'm just...
There's a lot of houses on the lake, I mean...
There are 18.
With no fence, with no gates.
Yeah, but there are six with.
There are some with.
There are six with, so I would just...
I know the most recent one was turned down by, I believe, our board. Michigan Avenue, I think it was. Actually, that was an entire fence, not just a gate, that they were asking for. Was it eight feet? Was it... Or was it six?
No, six and a half.
Six and a half feet, yeah. All right. Any other questions for our applicant?
No, I guess there really isn't a hardship. It's just a request.
The hardship is just the...
Typically, the variances are based on hardship.
Hardship is just the idea of security, of people accessing the property.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board that wants to make the motion here. Mr. Schneider, thank you very much. You can have a seat while we go through this part of the meeting.
Case number 2019-Z-07, I move to recommend granting a request for a 2.43...
You want to be...
...foot fence height variation to permit the installation of two 6.43-feet-tall gates in front yard at 500 Sheridan Road in accordance with the plan submitted.
All right, do I have a second? Mr. Sermon's second, I'm sorry. Mr. Schneider, your motion.
Yeah. This is across from the Bahai Temple. Clearly doesn't impact any neighbors, as far as I can tell. It is... It is not a solid fence. It's a very attractive designed fence. It... Six-foot-four request occurs only at one point. The 15-foot-wide gate, the average is between four feet and 6'4 divided, which is something like five feet. So, it's only at one point where it reaches 6.4 feet. It is transparent. It is wrought iron. It's very attractive, particularly with the rest of it. The rest of the fence, that is four feet, will be covered with landscaping. It may be... I'm not sure. The security issue is the big deal, but I think it is attractive addition, and in this situation, I don't think it will harm anyone, so I can support it.
All right, Mr. Sermon, your second.
Could I ask the applicant one more question?
Yeah.
One more. Adjacent to the entry against, the main entry, I see there's a gate with a sidewalk. How tall is that gate there?
Four foot.
That's four foot. Okay. All righty, thank you.
We didn't ask for that to be six, because you can't really see it the way it's landscaped, so we... Again, we were trying to be very careful in what we were asking for a variation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sermon, your second.
Well, I appreciate the design. It is aesthetically pleasing, and having just done another fence case, I can't wrap my head around a hardship for this one, and that's the main difficulty. And I think, you know, security, like Mr. Duffy had mentioned, if somebody's going to jump it, they're going to, you know, go in the center. But I don't see that being as much of an issue to get down to the lake, especially with all the other points that are accessible nearby, so I can't support it.
All right, any other comments that we have? Mr. Boyer?
So, I think Mr. Schneider was alluding this, that the gate itself, there's only a small portion that's over six feet.
That's the main gate?
Right.
The service gate, the entire thing is six feet. So, the gate to the... On the northern, there's two driveways.
I thought it was... Said that it's the same... Same design?
No.
I missed that?
I'm sorry. It's six feet across for the service gate. I'm sorry. I did say that incorrectly.
Same design, has the same. It's the same look with the... Yeah, right.
But it's six feet continuous.
It's not the teardrop.
It's just... No, it's straight across. I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, straight across.
Right. So, the main gate, which is the southern entrance, has the bell shape and the two big stone pillars?
Got it.
The northern gate, the service gate, which is actually closer to the street than the entry gate, is six feet across.
All right. If it had been, if the... Both gates had been the same design, I would have supported it, since it's... One of the gates is six feet across, then I'm now in the camp of not supporting it.
All right. Mr. Coling?
You know, clearly, there's no hardship here. Not that that needs to be the defining thing. You know, it certainly aesthetically looks good. It is 50% open. It's...
90%.
Or, yeah, 90%, 80%, whatever it is, open. So, it's, you know... So, from that perspective, you know, we're dealing with something different than the other case where we have a solid fence. You know, I'm kind of on the fence.
Hang on a second. It's comedy every other Wednesday, all right? Right here, you guys, anytime, all right? No drinks, though.
So, I guess I'll listen to the rest of the conversation.
Yeah. Ms. Norick, any comments?
I'm a bit torn, too. I don't see the hardship, though.
Yeah. So, my, you know, thoughts on this were... Look, I... And I think everybody on the board sees it. It's beautiful. It's going to make the... It's an imposing entryway, and that's something that I think is desirous to anybody that has as large a house that's being built there. But our code says this, and although it's beautiful and I can see how it works and everything, but our code says, you know, four feet adjoining a street, even with it set back. Listen, I get everything, but I think I'm leaning towards more of the strict interpretation of the code rather than finding a gray area here, because I just... I don't see a gray area here.
Can I just add, the code is silent on gates.
How do we... Yeah. What do you say, Lisa?
I think we would interpret a gate to be part of the fence.
All right, nice try. So, I mean, unless anybody else wants to add some more comments and discussion...
Would you have supported if both gate designs were the same with your...
No. No. I'm taking a strict interpretation on this, and the whole reason is because, in my opinion, and this is personal, that it's not... In an instance like this, it's not up to us to say that this is okay. I think that it's up to the board to say, you know what? We don't agree with the zoning board. We feel that this is a unique circumstance, and we will overturn them and give them what they request, or modify their request, as they did with the Michigan Avenue case.
Right.
But theirs, again, theirs was the entire fence was six and a half feet high, including gates and stuff, so...
You know, when I said in the other case was, you know, this is more art than science, and I think this really exemplifies...
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's really nothing objection about this fence.
I think it's a great... I think it's a great design. I think it...
So, I guess, all things being equal, I'm kind of leaning towards supporting it.
All right. All right, any other comments before we take a vote? No? All right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
No.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair's voting no as well. It's going to go as a negative recommendation of the Village Board, May 14th. As I said to the other applicant, please come, represent your case. They have the right to... It's their... They will overturn us if they feel like... Yeah. Yep. Thank you for coming. All right, do I have someone to make a recommendation to the chair to...
I would like the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019-Z-07.
Second.
Mr. Boyer's second, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2019-Z-10-12716th Street. This is a request for a 204.61-square-foot lot coverage variation and a 57.87-square-foot rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation to permit construction of a new detached two-car garage.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Garrett Hoheimer. I live at 1622 Willmette Avenue. This is regarding the property at 12716th Street.
All right. Quick question for you. Are you... This is something that you own currently, right?
I do own this.
Okay. All right. Please proceed. Sorry.
So, you've all visited the property. It's a traditional bungalow. We have expanded the dormer upstairs, which was done under a prior permit. The rear yard is, you know, it's a relatively small lot. There is alley access. As you can see from the front, as you go down 16th Street, the driveway is adequately sized in the front, but then as you reach the side of the house, it actually gets to about six feet wide. And I have a very small Prius, and I can't even get it through there. So, we're interested in taking out the entirety of the side drive, leaving part of the walkway in the front to retain it as a walkway to get down to the sidewalk, turning the garage to face the alley and making it a two-car garage so that it has adequate off-street parking for two vehicles. That's the intent of the project.
So, in addition, you're getting rid of the curb cut?
We would get...
You're getting rid of the apron?
Yes.
You're keeping only a portion of the driveway as a walk that's in the front?
That's right.
And then anything between the houses here? There's... Because there's concrete between the houses, right? Is there still a drive between the houses?
That drive would come out.
Where that comes out?
The entirety of the drive from the facade... The front facade of the house, all the way to the back facade of the garage would come out. We would reinstall a walkway from the garage door to the porch...
Yep.
So, that you could get from the garage to the back door of the house without...
So, a significant reduction in the impervious surface coverage.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that was all out in the open.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, I just... I drove that alley, most of us did, and it's about half the width, I think.
Of a... Yeah.
What is a normal alley? About 14 feet?
18.
18?
Yeah, 18 to 20 for the right-of-way. The paving, of course, is smaller.
So...
It's tight.
And so, I don't have as much of a, you know, problem with that. It's just I don't think it's currently laid out to be a usable garage. I think you'd have to...
You mean the proposal?
The proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, with the existing... The proposed location.
Right.
Where you've only got a three-foot apron.
Oh, I see.
And you've got...
You would want to set it into the rear yard further?
Yeah.
Further east into the rear yard?
And if you drive down... I drove down there, and then I actually ended up backing up the whole way.
Yeah, it's only one way out.
Yeah. One way, but then you can't get out.
Yeah, that's what I mean. One end, sorry, it's only open on one end, yeah.
So, I think you would have to set it back further to compensate that the alley is only half the size, and if... As I drove down the alley, I noticed a lot of the homes that have the garage door opening to the alley had done that.
Yeah.
Now, if they just had the side of the garage or the back of the garage, if they were coming off of the street, then it was three feet. So, I understand you've got a small car, but I think we've got to... It's got to be planned for everybody in the future as well, so I don't know.
My comment, if I could respond to that, is my, you know... My experience with it, and I'm happy to talk through it, is, you know, that's actually why we requested the garage to be a little bit wider than... So, I think we requested a 22 by 22, because it was actually the turning radius as you go this way that you can then pull out, as opposed to keeping it... Trying to get that square footage down so that we weren't requesting as much of a variance, but then you have to pull out very directly, straight. So, you know, having that little bit of extra width, when I talked to the architect about it, she said that she thought it was adequate to back up to the side by having it be, you know, a little bit wider. That way, it gave you the leeway inside the garage to turn the nose of the car. So, that's, you know...
Yeah, you take the expert's advice and...
Right.
Right. Yeah, I... You know, I had a similar experience, and my first thought, and I don't know if this makes any sense, but if the garage was, you know, a parallel to the alley and you came in, you know, like that, and now you'd have some increased...
Oh, I see.
Impervious surface, because now you've got a bit of a pad in the back to access the garage. Maybe that makes it easier to get in and out, but...
Then it eats up. Either way, it's going to eat up the yard space.
Right. That was my... Because I thought, similar to you, but then, you know, as I'm backing down the alley, I'm like, well, we all figure out our own situation. I mean, I've got, you know, a weird two-car garage, the apron's a little short for me to get past the corner of my house, but I've figured out how to get in and out without hitting any... Too many things.
Yeah, and we, you know, I had looked at putting the garage on the other side of the yard and, you know, some of the clearance over there, you know, assuming that the setup that the neighbors have on the other side of the alley stays the same, which is a big assumption to make, that, you know, they're never going to change anything over there. But there was also... But there was also, there's a very nice tree in the northwest corner--
Right.
--of the, over there that, you know, we'd like to retain. It was a, I think it's called a bald cypress. It's a very pretty tree.
Mm-hmm.
It's a mature tree. It's really nice.
Sure. All right. Any other questions?
I guess I would just recommend, and then this doesn't have to do with the zoning, having the architect check that again.
Okay.
Just from my, I'm an architect.
He, but if he made that, if they made that change, he'd have to come back for a new request, wouldn't he? Because that--
If he pushed it there.
Almost certainly.
Yeah.
Oh.
All right. Any other questions? Second chance, Mr. Boyer. No, you're good. All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case. You can have a seat. I'm going to ask if there's, Mr. Boyer's going to make the motion here.
For purposes of discussion, I-- Bear with me. I recommend granting a request for a 204.61 square foot lot coverage variation, a 57.87 square foot rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a new detached two-car garage at 127 16th Street in accordance with the plan submitted, and we're dealing with case number 2019-Z-10.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Boyer, your motion.
So I definitely want to hear what everybody has to say on this. So initially, um, I was thinking that a 20 by 20, which is majority of the neighbors that actually have garages in that alley have. There are not that many 22-wide garages. And this is, this is a unscientific measurement that we did, but most of them are 20 by 20. The point that was brought up, which is interesting, that since the, since the alley's so narrow, having a 20 by 20 garage actually limits the use of the garage, being able to pull in and pull out. So it's interesting in this case, a larger garage actually is beneficial and, you know, in some respects almost necessary to have a well-functioning garage because that alley's so tight. I'm still on the fence. I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say.
Mr. Cullen, your second.
Yeah, so, um, you know, the village is obviously in favor of two-car garages, and I think we have pretty uniformly approved where either a smaller two-car garage or a one-car garage being placed by a two-car garage that, that kind of is what the village is looking for, and that's, gets cars out the street. And there's a lot of positives to it. So from that perspective, um, you know, I could support this. Uh, you know, basically, there's 40, what is it, 2 by 20, right? So 40 extra square feet from a 20 by 20. Um, you know, there are, obviously, people have pointed out maybe some issues with the length of the, um--
Apron.
--the alley and how much maneuvering room you're going to have. But, I mean, that's really, really not before us, so, um, you know, I don't think the 40 extra square feet is a problem, at least not to me. So I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, I would just, just add that the intent to reduce the driveway from the, from the street, which is not usable, but it is impervious surface, and they will eliminate much of that. And that is not reflected, obviously, in the request, because the impervious surface issue is in the backyard. I think what we see more commonly is 22 by 20 feet, foot, garages. This is slightly la, 40 square foot larger, and I can understand for purposes of maneuvering. So I, I have, I have no issue with this request.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Norick, what do you think?
Um, I don't have a problem with the request either. I shared the same concern as Mr. Sermon of three-foot, not seeming to be enough room to really pull your car out and go without hitting, I think it's, another garage behind you. But it sounds like you talked to your architect about that. You've taken it into consideration, so, you know, if they think this is enough room and you do, then I can support this request.
Mr. Sermon?
Um, I think every, the whole design, everything's great. I'm just really concerned about that, because if you think a typical, and you think that it wouldn't be part of our preview, but purview, but it could impact the location, I don't know, possibly of the garage on the other side, too. I mean, if they come along and they want to put a garage three feet off of the lot line like you did, then, then there's three feet plus, I thought it was about eight feet plus three. You're only at 14 feet, and a typical parking space is 18 feet. And they do that based on the variety of different cars. So, I don't know, it just, it, uh, right now, you've got, you know, 11 feet or 12 feet. You don't even have enough space, where if you had a double alley and, or a regular-sized alley, which is 18 plus three, you're at 21. And that, then it makes more sense with the lot. So I guess I can't see approving it when it's, uh, I don't think it's going to function at all.
Okay. All right. Yeah, my, I have a similar concern, just the tightness of the alley, but I, you know, if your belief is that this is going to work based on what your experts are telling you, I, I'm sure she had some sort of schematic or something that she used to figure it out. So I didn't have a problem. I thought the extra width was, you know, helpful, as explained by you. So I'm, I'm in support of it, so. Want to we take a vote?
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So it's going to go as a positive recommendation, Village Board. The meeting's on the 14th. I suggest you come. What's, what usually happens with positive recommendations, they go on what's called the consent agenda, which happens, they vote on everything that's positive, all in one vote, instead of all these different votes. But in the event that someone wants to discuss it, it can get pulled off, and then you would have to kind of re-present your case. So, all right. Need you to sign one of these for me and take the other one with you. And thank you very much.
We'll authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019-Z-10.
Second.
All in favor? All right. I as well.
Can you just keep that one? Thank you.
All right, good night. You are ready.
Our next case is 2019-Z-14, 627 Maple Avenue. This is a request for a 4.69-foot side yard solar panel setback variation, variation from the requirement that the freestanding solar energy system be only in the rear yard, a 290-square-foot solar panel size variation, and a 6.4-foot accessory structure separation variation to permit the installation of freestanding solar panels on an existing fence.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, everyone. My name is John Och. I'm here this evening with my wife, Josephine Branco. We live at 627 Maple Avenue, and we've lived in that house now for 37 years. So this is our first opportunity of actually having a request in front of the zoning board of appeals. So hopefully you'll view it, our eco-friendly project positively and vote for its recommendation to the board.
Well, I assume you've been watching us on Channel 6 all these years, right?
Well, you--
Maybe.
Some, some projects, they spark my interest.
Now, there's only two people at home.
So there's only two people at home watching, I guess.
Before I begin, Chairman Duffy, when I talked to you very briefly this morning, you mentioned you'd maybe like to have some manufacturer's information on the panels--
Yes.
--that I'm looking at.
Thank you very much.
I did make some copies of--
Thank you.
--of what I'm considering. We need to pass them through. Because we have limited space, we're interested in doing really premium panels. So these particular ones are made in the USA, and they're really like super-duper efficient. So, um, my wife and I, we believe that global warming is real. We believe that, that it's caused by man, you know, human activity. We believe in science, and we believe that everybody should be doing something to try to mitigate that. In our particular case, we felt that one thing that, we felt that we could do, especially with some of the recent demise of some of the oak trees in, to the west of us, is that we really have an opportunity to do something with solar panels on our property. I don't know if you want to do the projector, Lisa?
Um, yeah.
Tim will turn it on.
Oh. The--
Tim will turn it on.
The, our house, you know, basically was built in a, in a forest swamp, more than 100 years ago in 1912. The house is 107 years old, so it's been there a long time. It was, it was developed in a, kind of in a, in a, in a forest. So there were all these, all these big oak trees are, were present before all the houses were built. So the, so the house is basically had been surrounded for most of its life with these oak trees, and have, they have big, huge canopies. So for most of the time, we've lived at the house, and for certainly most of its lifetime, even thinking about doing a solar project would have been impossible, because it's just always in the shade. Unfortunately, in the last probably half a dozen years or so, some of the larger oak trees that were on the properties to the west of us, that would be on the other side of the alley, were, were victims of either lightning strikes, disease, and, and, you know, even property development. So three large oak trees have, had come down, you know, starting about six years ago, but more recently, about three. And so now our house is, we find that we, we have like really nice, unobstructed sun all along the middle portion of the property that faces the alley. And here would be just an example, just a photo taken the other day of this, you know, maybe about 1:00, 1:00, 1:30 in the afternoon. So all, the whole western exposure of our house is, is bathed in unobstructed sunlight. So we, we felt that would be something that we, that we would want to do. We wanted to look at, can we put, can we install solar panels to generate our own electricity for, for our house? When we, when we, when we started reading the zoning ordinances, and then ultimately having a discussion with Lisa and John Adler, we, we, of course, realized that the, the current zoning ordinances, they, they sort of have sort of two basic ways you can have a solar project in the, in the ordinances. If you, if you do a project that's, say, house-mounted, and that would include things like putting them on the roof, or actually on the walls of the house, the facade, you can pretty much do, you can pretty much put on almost anything you want. It's unlimited number. You can have it facing any direction. So even like the front of the house, you could load them up with solar panels. But, but whereas if you look at what the, what the requirements are for what they call like a ground-supported system, so this would be not really attached to the house, but, which is supported by some kind of structure on the ground, there it seems like the, the limitations, I don't know if they just haven't been thought through, but there's, there's certain requirements in there that we think just aren't realistic, and they certainly aren't equitable when you look at just what can be done for a, for like a roof-mounted system. So, um, so just for the sake of argument, I, uh-- I, I kind of did a little drawing of what we could do if we wanted to load up the roof with solar panels and put them on the side of the house. And I think everyone would agree that this looks very unattractive. It's pretty bad. It, it, because our house has like multiple, I'll say, dormers, and because of the hip-style roof, you basically don't have a nice, like rectangular area where you could get a nice solar, you know, rectangular-sized solar panel like laid out. So you're kind of doing this hopscotch method, where you're putting some here, putting some there. They end up, I think, looking, looking quite bad. And then, of course, there's other problems as well. It makes it much more difficult to install these things and hook them up, because you have, everything has to be connected together. So whether it's conduit or wire, you know, you got this, you know, like this funny mesh going on, on the roof. And in our particular case, because we have, the, the roof is slate material, it's practically pretty much impossible to try to do any renovation, any retrofit work on that roof without basically tearing it off. So we, we kind of quickly came to the decision that we really don't want to do this, at least that way, the, the building-supported system. So what we thought, because, again, going back to this, what we have in the alley, we have, I have a fence right there. And I built this fence probably more than 10 years ago, and because both my wife and I were structural engineers, when we build something, we build it to last. So there's no way, this, these, like that fence, these fence posts, they're, they're like 10-foot-long Unistrut sections, P5000. They're, they're embedded in concrete. The embedment is nearly four feet deep. So they're not going anywhere, and I'm sure they'll be there long since, since I've been passed away. So they, they easily can support like having like a little bracket added to the top of them, and then, and then some solar pa, like a row of solar panels added along the top. So instead of the, like this ugly, ugly elevation view that I showed you before, we would end up with something like this. So a much more, much more attractive-looking system, where it's, it's basically running the full length of the, of the fence. It, um, the cross-section of it would be something like this. I've shown like the, here would be that, here's the existing fence along the alley. My pencil's not quite long enough. With these steel fence posts, and then I would add a little bracket that would be bolted into the Unistrut at the top, which would then support these panels at an angle, about a 25-degree angle leaning backward.
So what, you're proposing a whole line of them, not one, just one on the top of each post?
No, it's a line. It's a ribbon. I'm basically, I'm forming a ribbon of these solar panels. And so there is the, there's the bracket that's on every post, but then there's these, these longitudinal members that are like the supporting rails--
Yep.
--so that you can then mount them.
So then, what, if we were to look at one of the solar panels in a vertical position, what's the, the dimension of the, the length of it, the--
Well, the--
Height.
Well, the, these, that was part of the difficulty, coming up with even what I wanted to propose, because everybody makes them a different size. So, but the ones that I've been focusing on, like the information I gave you, they're approximately 44 inches wide in the, it's the short direction, and in the long direction, I believe they're like 68 inches long. So--
In what, in what direction are you proposing to put--
I'm, I'm lining them up, I'm lining them up in the, in the narrow direction.
Okay.
If you look--
So they're going to, so they're going to lay, they're going to lay horizontally as opposed to vertically?
Yeah, there'd be, I think they call it landscape.
Oh, landscape.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be one big ribbon of landscape roll of these panels.
So we've got, so you've got a 44-inch height off the fence, but it's actually being angled back a little bit. So how much higher from the fence are we talking about from?
Should I interrupt? Just one second. If you look at page 1.4, it really explains most of the questions.
Yeah, because it leans back--
The section through--
That's right. It's a 25-degree tilt from the horizontal, or angle from the horizontal.
So it's--
So the vertical projection's about 18 and a half inches.
Half inches, okay.
And then the horizontal projection's about three foot four, well, miscellaneous ballpark. And so the, um, so it, and then the, the beauty, the beauty of it is that this would be very simple to construct with these little brackets. The fence posts are there, they can support the, these, these panels don't weigh much. I think one panel in ballpark is maybe 50 pounds, something like that. So, so it, it's relatively light. So the, the fence posts, I've already done some structural-like calculations on them. They easily can carry this extra load. So the, the, so the, so then it would be very, very simple to add the brackets. It'd be very simple to install these things. You're not putting them on your roof, so it's much closer to the ground. And it would be very simple to wire them up, especially when they're all connected one end to the other, to like, to just do a daisy-chain wiring for this thing.
What is the total square footage of these panel, this ribbon?
You've got 120 feet in length by--
I'm sorry?
Forty. What is the total square footage?
Oh, I'm, I would like to get 390.
And what will that result in, in terms of generating?
Oh, well, if I, if I, if I can get the 390 square feet, we can generate almost 100% of the power in a year that the house consumes. I think I've got, I mean, if you're interested in the numbers, I do have a, some information here on that.
That's based on sort of the average sunny day?
Yeah, um, I knew this would happen.
While he's looking at that, Lisa, I have a question. If you were to install them on the roof or on the side of the house, do you have to come for a variance at all, or are there guidelines for that?
There are, there are standards. The, they have to meet the height, and they have to meet the setbacks. Sometimes height can be difficult. There's some other things about setback from the ridge and the ed, and the eaves.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for, I don't know where--
I have a question for you as well, so--
I'm just curious.
I understand that this, this gets caught up in the accessory structure code--
Pretty much.
--but since it's mounted on a fence, and there's additional height that's, that's being added, wouldn't this, wouldn't this be, uh, wouldn't this--
A fence variance?
Yeah, be, be applied to the, the heist, height, fence height variation, because it turns out to be about eight feet in total at the highest point of the panel.
We didn't really talk about that. I think as a solar panel, that's a more restrictive way to look at it, because it would have, it has the five-foot setback requirement, and because it's not--
Would it be in addition, addition to?
Hmm.
You know, I guess you can get rid of the accessory structure, but--
Yeah.
But what it, it really doesn't feel like an accessory structure, and I don't want to debate the, you know, how you--
Right.
--apply the codes to this, the application. But, but it, it adds another foot and a half to the existing six-and-a-half-foot fence.
Yeah, but that, but it's not, it's not a fence--
Yeah, it's not a fence.
A fence is for, you know, enclosing yard.
It's not accessory structure.
Well, the way I look at it--
Right.
--just again, my reading of the, of the zoning ordinance is, see, the fence here is the bamboo. It's not, it's not the fence posts, and it's not anything that's, that's mounted off of what's behind it. So, so for example, if you look at that section, you know, 13.4 for accessory structures, like the, the height limit on, on these solar panels, you could go up to something like 12 feet.
Right. But it--
That would be allowed.
But within the accessory structure code, you also can have a bathroom and running water and an oven, but you can't have living quarters, I believe. That, so, that, my point is this, this is caught in the accessory structure code, but it's not an accessory structure, right?
No, it is an accessory structure.
But it's also not a fence.
But because you're hanging it on the fence, is what he's saying, how does it become an accessory structure if it's part of the fence? Because you're using the fence posts as the supports.
Well, because it, the, that section 13.4 has its own specific section dealing with solar energy systems. And it said it's, then these are accessory structures.
They're accessory structures because under the definition, they're on their own support, not being used, that support's not being used for a treehouse or for a fence. That was, I believe, the concept when they designed that part of the code. I'm not trying to argue against you, I'm just trying to.
Right.
Come along with what his point of view is.
For freestanding solar panels, 10 by 10, there has to be certain setback, and that's an accessory structure. But since this is not, this is not the 10 by 10 traditional, on a pedestal, solar panels in the middle of the yard, this is mounted, they're really silent to the code, this exact situation.
So you look at it more as a fence because it's, he's integrated.
Well, that was the question. Since we're on, since we have so many fence issues this evening.
Why is this not a fence issue as opposed to an accessory structure?
And that was the question I had for Lisa, because it is adding a foot and a half to the fence.
Right, which is where I was.
No matter if it's tilted or not, overall, it's another, it's an eight-foot fence structure, right? So that was, that was the, that was my question.
I can understand that. I guess the thing I would just add is that the definition of a fence talks about, and is used to delineate a boundary or as a barrier, means of protection and so forth, and this element that they're adding is not serving the function of a fence. If you want, if you think fence height variation should be considered, we can amend the request.
I totally understand, it doesn't fit in the definition of a fence, but it also doesn't fit in the definition of an accessory structure either. So it.
Well, I mean, the definition of accessory structure includes, is broad enough to include fences.
Oh, all right. I was looking at this, which is why I was asking about the height difference, because it's more about the fence. And then I was willing, because I think it's more part of the fence, willing to kind of overlook the accessory structure part. But then the other thing, I was visualizing that these were smaller panels. You know, we're talking about, even though you lay them out portrait, I mean, they're five feet, eight inches in width.
In length, yeah.
Yeah.
Or continuous, yeah.
Yeah, but, and then it's going to be continuous. And so I, my visualization of it was, it was going to be a little bit less impactful, you know, as, to the line of sight as you look at the house and look at the fence. Now, I, please.
Don't forget, I mean, don't forget.
Please keep in mind, I would love to have solar panels on my house. I mean, I'm, I'm the guy that recycles at the office with everything I can, I bring it home just because we don't, you know, so I'm trying to make my little difference in the world.
Difference, okay.
Change my footprint, but.
I guess.
I'm just trying to figure out a way that I find the gray here because I want to support this.
Well, I think part of it to me is, if you look at the hardship, I mean, he wants to install this, save energy, help the environment. And the hardship is you can't install something like this on a slate roof.
He can't install it on his house, so he's chosen this way. And this is, I, here's where the gray comes in, in my opinion, is that this is not really the way that anybody that wrote our code visualized solar panels being installed.
You know, it's.
I mean, what I would add too is that, like, when I drive around the village, I almost universally see solar panels on roofs. I don't, I don't know, I can't think of one example where someone's sort of done them on a ground support system.
Right.
Now, maybe there have been, but I don't, I'm not aware of it.
Well, you just can't see it because it's probably enclosed in someone's backyard.
Right, our, well, my yards really don't lend to having a pedestal mounted.
True, with all the trees.
With the trees.
For sure.
And a lot of people don't want to lose their yard space as well. And so it, the code allows it, but it really doesn't lend to, you know, a good application.
But, you know, but I view, I honestly view this as really an elegant solution. It's, I think it's attractive. It, for most of the length of this thing, you know, it isn't like, basically the house is right behind it. So like even when you look at the elevation view, you know, it isn't like you're, we wouldn't be obstructing any air or light from anybody. The fact that even with the, when you, once you start also considering too, just the layout of the lot, the fact that we have the alley right next to us, and then all of the properties to the west, it's, they're all facing the other way, so, which is their backyards, so.
I have a couple of questions. I noticed that your fence ends and there's no return to the house.
Say it again.
Towards your street.
On the north end of the fence?
On Maple, right. So as the fence comes to Maple, I didn't see a return going to the house.
Does not return.
Would you, and could they, Lisa, put up the same fence if we proved it to hide?
Looking down?
Looking down the run of the fence. You following me?
Well, I guess I could, but I don't understand what that would gain. I don't see the point of that.
A statics, I think, is all it is.
You know, it doesn't, you can't.
The neighbors more?
No.
It's a small, it's a very small, it's like one six-foot fence panel. It just returns to the side of the house.
It's about five feet.
But you would still see the top part.
You'd see some of it, but as you're looking down, you wouldn't see all of it, right? So if you're standing on the sidewalk, you wouldn't see all of the panels as you're looking all the way down the back.
Remember, you know, you're looking, you're looking down on the, so that you can't tell how long it is, you just see this thin strip.
Right.
You know, I think these are going to have to be, you know, these really are specialized for each location. Well, because it is, this one's along an alley, I guess I try to think, what would this be like if you had a neighbor and you, and you, it was a dividing, a devising fence between, or demising fence between your neighbor, you put it up?
I couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the neighbors could grow a tree and then you'd.
Well, see, but see, even, again, the uniqueness of my lot and the alley that's in there, that's like a 20-foot buffer.
Yep.
And then you've got all the houses to the west, they're basically turned the other way. So all the buildings in the back of their lots are basically one-story garages, you know, with hip roofs or gable roofs. That's the opportunity. I don't have shade from any of those structures, so.
Right.
And likewise, I'm not impacting any of their views either.
Yeah, this is one of the things that I, the main thing that I thought was, what's the impact on these immediate neighbors? And when I walked down the alley, the potential was only the house that's immediately to the west on the corner, this 535, according to the Sanborn map, being able to even see a portion. But his garage, I mean, maybe he sees the first, you know, five feet of where the solar panels would be. As you go down the alley, the garages and trees and fencing from everybody else, they block the view out of, even out of people's second-story windows for the most part of his fence. So I was like, all right, there's really no impact from this on the neighbors. So to his point about the uniqueness of the site, it's, it's there. But I fall back to, similar to Mr. Boyer, I mean, all right, if they want to call this accessory structure, it seemed to be more about a fence height or a height right along the alley issue than, hey, how close is it to the house, which is the accessory structure issue?
Well, would you not have an issue if their fence wasn't six feet tall and it was, they had a four-and-a-half foot tall and then they put their?
Well, that wouldn't be a question anymore, yeah. So, and, you know, as far as the.
Could you lower your fence?
Well.
Why?
Well, then you couldn't walk down the side of the house. He's got five feet between his house and his fence. I mean, that's a passage to, along there. If it's lower than, you know, you're whacking your head into the solar panels.
Did you look into solar panel shingles? Solar panel what? Shingles. Oh, that's impossible now.
He did the slate roof, what'd you say, eight years ago?
The slate roof?
Yeah.
That was 2005.
Okay.
Yes, they weren't even making them then.
It's a slate roof that's going to be there for 50 years.
I think Tesla, you know, Tesla makes, I think Tesla's doing solar shingles now, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, but that's what you do when you're running, that's what you do when you're putting on a brand-new roof.
Right.
And so, you know, my, when I, when I had the slate roof put on, it was like, I don't want, this doesn't have to be touched for another 50 years, if then. So that's why I don't want to mess, I don't want to muck around like with the roof at all because, you know, it was expensive to put up there, it was a lot of work, and so I don't want to do anything to have people walking around up there to be breaking these slates.
I think by having the fence adjacent to it, it's going to conceal, conceal it fairly well. If you imagine if the fence was only four feet and then they had a structure that was built up.
Mm-hmm.
You'd see all that structure in the panels, it'd be much more obvious. I guess it's, like I said, I think it'll be a case-by-case. If I have a large front yard that faces south, can I come and put a solar panel starting at six feet off the ground?
It's my, I think we're, I guess I should ask this question. Was there any consideration into making it so that there's one of these panels just over each post as opposed to a whole ribbon?
Well, that honestly wouldn't make sense to me. See, the idea here is that I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a reasonable-sized system such that I can generate, you know, get as close as I can to the annual usage for my house. And so just putting, you know, just putting on, like, having a half a dozen panels or, you know, that that just doesn't make any sense to me. The idea is you want to get, you want to maximize for this small strip. And so, you know, and in fact, you know, the, and even if you, and honestly, even if you centered every panel on top of each post, now it's going to look more like, you know, like somebody has like some missing teeth. You know, like on that elevation view, you're going to have a panel, then there's going to be a few feet that's gap, another panel.
You think it'd be more noticeable than a ribbon?
Yeah.
I don't understand what the, what the issue is. I understand the discussion between accessory structure and fence height and so forth, but if the issue is, is objectionable from a visual point of view, then compared to what? If they had a, if they had a straight roof facing west and he covered that with solar panels, which would be visible to the whole neighborhood?
That's right.
This is, I think, a much more elegant solution. It is an unusual one.
It's unique.
It's not covered by the, obviously not covered by our code, and we need to just make a recommendation based on our best judgment here.
You know, see, like, again, this is, this is what I could do as a matter of right.
Right, but, you know, to be honest with you, nobody would do that to their house, really. I mean, you can do that, but nobody would do that.
Well, but I'm just, but that just points out the, maybe the inequity of the, why distinguish between, you can do this on your building, but now I want to do a ground-supported system, and now all of a sudden is, there's all these impediments.
Well, I guess the question would be, one last one.
Yeah.
If somebody came along, had a six-foot fence, they want to do the same exact thing, but they said my lot isn't as deep, so I wanted to, instead of an 18-inch rise, now I want it three feet, and I want it to be a much bigger panel, turn, you know, turn them sideways.
The other way, yeah.
What happens, you know, how do we make decisions on that?
Well, look, every, every application is case-by-case, you know?
And our code really is, a code isn't designed, it's not built for this application for solar panels.
See, the, see, again, my view is that from the zoning ordinances point of view, the relief that I'm seeking is the fact that it's basically, to some extent, right behind the fence. It's almost right on the property line. So I'm not, I don't have that five-foot setback. So that's the, that's one of the required, what's one of the aspects that I'm asking for belief on. And then also the fact that because this is the alley and this is technically my side yard, that's when I run up against that requirement that you're not supposed to have them in the side yard. So, so if, if you did have a ground-supported solar system that met those requirements to set it back and all that other, well, then this thing could be like 50, I think it might, I forget, I don't have the ordinances in front of me, but the height on it, Lisa, isn't it something like 12 feet, 15 feet high?
Yeah, 15.
So, so the fact that.
The idea that it's set back lessens the impact of that height, that's why they have that setback. All right.
Well, but, you know, but I'm still getting some of that aspect going on here. See, like, for example, if you look at the cross-section?
Yep.
The, because the alley is sort of sunken, you know, when they, when they redid the alley and then we did the retaining wall, so like an individual person standing, walking along the alley, well, they're about this tall. Okay? Well, they look, they look up at the fence, all you're going to see is that little line. You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even see the, you wouldn't even see the panel.
Well.
You wouldn't, you certainly wouldn't see a 40-inch surface.
You wouldn't, yeah, I agree with you there. I think it's still an impact, but I'm not disagreeing with, I'm not disagreeing with what you're pointing out right here. I think we don't have code that covers this, and I think we're all trying to figure out a way to justify making this happen.
Mm-hmm.
And then with the thought that, how impactful to the neighborhood, is this going to change character in the neighborhood, is this going to impact your neighbors in a negative fashion? And I'm going to say, I think we've all gotten to where we need to be. So I'm going to ask if there, make sure, everybody, Mike, you got one last question? You're the only one not nodding your head.
Can I just present one more thing?
Feel free.
I mean, regarding the character of the neighborhood?
Sure.
Well, in my view, the character of the neighborhood is an alley. So this is, this is what you see. When you're just, instead of looking at my nice bamboo fence, you look, just look a little bit the other way, that's what you see. You see garages, you see utility poles, and you see garbage cans. You also see, you also see stuff like this, it's like no man's land, where people just dump stuff between the garages, and they don't care. And you see, and you see basically garbage cans with all kinds of garbage that doesn't get picked up and it's dumped all over the place. So this is the character of the neighborhood, is the character of this alley. So it seems to me that.
You're really not fitting in, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
You're really not standing out. So you're changing the character of the neighborhood here.
So I don't know, I'm trying to beautify it, let's put it that way. So, so I don't know, you know, my, my thought was that by doing this nice ribbon, this nice ribbon, it looks way better than putting it on the roof. It looks way better than putting it on the side of my house. And it, and it, I think it actually would, it actually is attractive, I would say, by my, by my view. So it'll be an improvement, and we're helping mankind, for heaven's sakes. So why not, why not let me do it?
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no, and I'm going to ask it, okay, Mr. Sermon's going to make the motion.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 4.69 side yard solar panel setback variation, a variation from the requirement that the freestanding solar system be only in the rear yard, a 290-square-foot panel size variation, a 6.4 accessory structure separation variation to permit the installation of freestanding solar panels on an existing fence at 627 Maple Avenue in accordance with plans submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Boyer, second. Mr. Sermon, your motion.
I walked out there today, and my first thought was that it's really going to stand But then, looking at it further, looking at the section, looking at the perspective, and understanding that this is on an alley, I think it's a good solution. I think, you know, with the slate roof, there's, you put them on and they're going to last 50-plus years, so there's no way to modify it there. I think it would be, you know, to apply it to the side of the house, I think would be awkward. So I think, I think it's a well-thought-out design, and I can support it.
So you think the hardship here is that he doesn't really have any place else to put this?
That's what I think the hardship.
Without cutting trees down.
Yeah, with, right.
You can put on the, you can put on the garage roof, right?
You gotta remove a tree, though.
You can put on a, right.
Yeah, but he's doing this.
You've got to cut down all the trees to create sunlight.
So I think each, each of these cases is going to have unique criteria.
Absolutely.
And this one just happens to be the perfect site along the alley to accommodate this. And I really don't think you'll see much of it. You know, you might see a little reflection or glare off of it, and I think that's probably all you'll see.
Let me get that off my forehead, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm trying to, trying right now, I'm dealing with it.
All right, Mr. Boyer, your second here.
So.
Send it back at the same time.
Four requests, all of them, all of them really don't deal with truly what's being proposed here. So, you know, the, the solar panels are not on a building, they're not on a roof, the panels aren't really an accessory structure, it's really not a freestanding unit because they're attached to the fence. So none of the definitions really fit here, the way, the way this is being proposed. So it's interesting that our code, we can't apply anything in our code really to this proposal. So the way I'm looking at it is, how does it impact the neighborhood? And it truly is in the alley, so the impact is minimal on the neighbors, other than cars driving by. But it is an alley, and that point was made. When I first went to the site, I was with Mr. Sermon, the same concerns, is this going to be visually impactful to the neighborhood? Is it going to be unsightly? Is it going to be too high? And I think this is such a new design, such a new case. And I think this is such a new design, such a new case, we might see some more of these in the future. I was, I was against it before, but I've become uncomfortable with it. So I, I, I think there is enough hardship here that I can support it. That being said, the one thing I wish we could have, especially on, on these type of situations, this type of proposal, is a mock-up, a true mock-up. We can see what it looks like, mounted, right?
That's, I agree with you, because that's my one concern. What really is it going to impact?
What's it going to look like?
And that's why I wanted to try and get a feel for the dimensions. You know, we can have this cross-section, and we can have the drawings supplied by the applicant, but really, what is the impact of the size and this ribbon of these solar panels? Understand the goal, understand, I understand why it can work, you know, with it being attached to these posts that he's got in place. I do have a little concern about the posts supporting the amount of weight, if he says each one of these panels is 50 pounds roughly. You know, you got, you're going to, every post is going to be supporting at least a panel and a half of weight, so, and now, I know the bamboo fence doesn't weigh a lot, but I don't, I haven't seen any calculations.
There's metal, there's metal posts and cement. That's what, that's what I was asking.
I think, I think the way to view it, instead of saying that it's part of the fence, I mean, it's really, you don't see any, any other fences that are put together the way a structural engineer will do.
Agreed.
So really, it's a, the accessory structure is the post and the panels, and it happens to have a wood screen attached to it, bamboo attached to it. So it's really not, you couldn't take a normal fence and ever think of doing this.
All right, well, I still, you know, don't have any idea. I mean, is the, is the metal post, you know, one inch squared, you know, or is it, is it four inches squared, you know? And so what, can it support the weight? And that's my, that's my secondary concern, too. What would really be the...
First, what's going to let it, what I'm talking about? But if it can't, what happens?
If it can't, it falls up against his house, and he's got a, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe he goes back to one panel per post, or something like that, yeah. Mr. Schneider, yeah?
I, this is a unique solution, a unique situation. It will not be a precedent for anything, for, I hope not. Each of these will be unique. The code quite doesn't cover the situation. From a visual point of view, I imagine the applicant could put four strands of barbed wire up there, and, and that would be legal, but it would not, would not be visually appealing. So I can, I have no, this is a unique situation, and the, the purpose, solar panels, solar power, I think should be applauded. Whether it is on the roof, or in this kind of unique situation, I, I, I think it's very good. I would support it.
All right. Mr. Cullings, any other?
Yeah, you know, this is obviously a one-of-a-kind, and just by kind of confluence of events, that, you know, the oak trees are gone, there's an, you know, using the house, side of the house, and the roof is not really a solution. You know, along a fence in an alley, I mean, I don't know how you get any more remote and away from the public, unless the garbage guys are going to complain about it, but, you know, so I, I think it's, it is a, a, a good solution, if this is something you want to do. I don't think it's going to create a kind, I would much rather see this than see a patchwork on a roof or the side of a house. So I think from a visual perspective, this is a much better solution. And if that's what we're really worried about, I think this is going to be a lot easier to look at than what the alternatives would be, so I can support this.
All right.
I agree, and I can support it as well.
All right. I, I pretty much expressed where I was coming from. Listen, I'm all about, I feel like I'm pretty about the environment. I want to support this. My main concern is what it's going to look like. I don't think that we have a real good visual image presented to us. Oftentimes, we ask people when they're submitting plans, and they're, you know, drawn by a couple of guys, and this is how our deck's going to look, and it's really not a good representation of how the deck's going to look. We ask them to come back with better plans. I think, you know, that one of the reasons I saw you tonight, asked for, what do the panels look like? And I appreciate you bringing them in, because it helps a little along the lines that we're trying to picture what is going to be there. I, I really want to support this, I'm just struggling with, I think, where, what it's going to look like. So, I'm not sure where I'm going to fall, but we'll take a vote, and we'll all find out.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullings?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman W.
Chair's going to vote yes. Yeah, I mean, and again, I say, I, I really, I think this is admirable, I think this is such a unique situation, because you're on the alley, and you're taking advantage of that aspect of your lot, that I, I think maybe that's why I fall for you, so. That is your good looks.
I, I saw your fence, I saw your, the iron that you put in, and I see you go to great lengths to make sure things are perfect.
Oh, yeah.
So for people coming, you know, after you, just make sure of the installations. Great.
Really good, yes.
And also, I do...
Well, you're, you're...
Well, in terms of other people with the same type of proposal.
Yeah.
So, so people, because I know we don't, we don't set precedent here, however, we're going to be looking at, at this project, and people are going to say, that thing was horrible, right? Or that thing was great.
Or you did a great job with it, yeah.
And I'd find a spot in the alley, some sort of marker, and take a before and after from that same spot.
Well, in fact, you know, that's why, even when I hand out that information on the panels, I mean, these really look nice, because they're really all black. And you can leave them like the black aluminum, like they're anodized. So it basically could really blend together, so you, you wouldn't be like the typical view, like you see, like that, you know, where all the lines and all these dumb little squares and all that other stuff. So I think it really will be attractive.
All right. Thank you very much. You need to sign, so this is going to go as a positive recommendation of village board meetings on the 14th?
I move.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm finished.
Okay. I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019-Z-14.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, all right. One more case.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will refuse my vote for the next case.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next case is 2019-Z-12, 2737 Blackhawk Road. This is a request for a 7.73-foot side yard generator setback variation and a 7-decibel sound variation to permit the installation of an emergency standby generator.
All right, welcome.
Hi, Elizabeth Merkin, 2737 Blackhawk Road. I'm just, I'm on that corner lot of Blackhawk and Osage, so I know what makes my lot different. Like, my front yard is really my driveway, and my side yard is really Blackhawk, which is the front of my house. And so the house was built around, finished around 2006, when I moved in. It was a spec house, I didn't have it built, it was built. And I've flood, part of my basement has flooded three times with three power outages over the last 13 years, where I've had to, like, fully replace one whole section of it, carpets and everything. After the first time it happened, I replaced the, I have two-some pumps, I replaced the pumps in there, put them, made them higher horsepower, so that they could pump more effectively and efficiently, added battery backup with two marine batteries in it, that should continuously pump for eight-plus hours if you don't have any power. But every time we've had an outage, it's either been so forceful that they just keep going and they run out, or it's been longer than eight hours. The last one, just being at Thanksgiving, which I lost power for 48 hours plus. And so at that point, I decided, I really think I need to find a more permanent solution, because even if I want to go sell my house, I'm going to, you know, have to say that I've had water in my basement, and how have I resolved this issue? And it's a repeated pattern, it hasn't been a one-isolated instance. I think the first time was that storm in the fall of 2006, which ripped all those micro tornadoes. So I think the first time it happened, I thought, oh gee, this wasn't going to really happen again. But it seems to be happening. So I had the contractor come out to look for areas to place the generator, and the position that he has determined is the best possible places, because that's where the electric and the gas actually enter the house. So I realized that possibly I could put it on the other side yard, but my other side yard really is my front yard, and I just, aesthetically, I don't think that that would look good from the corner of the street. And it would still have to go through, I would still have to go through a completely finished basement, digging up ceilings and going through walls to get, to hook to the gas and the electric that's on the backside of the house. And so I guess that's where I'm at with that.
All right. I'm going to, Lisa, what's, so, is there even a rear yard setback for generators? You know, like this, because we're calling this a side yard setback?
Right, um, right. So in the, in the rear yard to the west, it would be a minimum of 15 feet, unless it needs to be more for the decibels.
Right, but it, because, you know, because the house is situated, and this is the front of the house, facing Blackhawk, if we call this the rear yard, the rear yard setback is still 15 feet?
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, do we have any questions for our applicant?
I guess on the decibels, so are there generators that meet the decibel requirements?
Um...
70 decibels.
I, that I'm not sure about, if I, you mean, if I get one that's of a lower power? I don't believe that there's a huge difference. I mean, the one that I was currently looking at, one of my neighbors has exactly installed in her backyard that lives down the street, so that was sort of, you know, where I was at with that. So I'm not really sure. It says, I don't have the correct answer to that, so I won't even try.
This is that generic?
Yes.
This is what you're, and it's not, it, it's enclosed, but it still has the, the decibels readings. But did we ever decide, you're talking about screening it with a fence, right?
Well, I, currently, there is, if you are facing that side of the house where I want to put the generator, there is a fence that leads into the...
Right.
...small section of that backyard. So my intent would be just to extend it up to the, a little bit past in front of the generator, so that it was then screened in.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't probably...
Yeah, it should be able to do a sound.
All right, I just asked Lisa if you would have to...
Get a variance for that, do I?
Yeah, and she says no, because it stays behind the front yard setback, at least
Okay.
...at first glance. So, so there's something to be said for screening it, to help a little.
I assume that's only visual, that's not...
Noise-wise, yeah.
So, there was a letter from a neighbor that had some concerns, and they took some information from a Purdue University website. So I, I poked around, we always come up with these generator issues, and truly have an understanding of decibel levels and, and how they change as they increase. And I think I pulled this information from the same website that the neighbor pulled it, because this is from Purdue University as well. And it, it has really good information on how, how decibel levels sound with applying real-life items. So I, if I could just go through a couple of these, in the 70-decibel category, the comment was, in arbitrary base of comparison, upper 70s are annoyingly loud to some people. That's, that's upper 70s. And that's right at, at the, you know, the level of, you know, in the distance, you're right at that, at that item. They go further, passenger car at 20, 65 miles an hour at 25 feet is 77 decibels. Living room music is 76 decibels, 76 decibels. Radio, TV, audio, vacuum cleaner, 70 decibels. In the letter, just to be clear, they use the 80-decibel category, and they say, 80 decibels, it's two times as loud as 70 decibels. So it's exponentially increases. So when they use the 80-decibel sound level, it's totally different than the 70-decibel sound level, because it's two times as loud as the 70-decibel level.
But the 77 that we're dealing with is going to be closer to the 80.
But it's a log scale, so it's ex, it goes up...
However, to go further, their, their example they use, they said, is comparable to a freight train at 15 meters, or a diesel truck at, at 40, which is not necessarily true, is in this description, that's 84 decibels, and the freight train is 89 decibels.
We, we have, a lot of these have come through here.
Yep.
I mean, I've never heard any follow-up that there's been issues. Runs for 30 minutes a week, usually they run it at like 10 o'clock in the morning, which is, you know, as innocuous a time as you can get.
Which would fall in the category of living room music, radio, TV, audio, or vacuum cleaner.
Well, this...
I guess, you know, we've always asked, too, is there an alternate location?
Right, so...
For this.
So I, you know, I had a meeting with Lisa before, before this meeting started, I asked her, you know, and, and I walked around the house without going into your yard.
That's okay.
The backyard, I mean, I walked across the front and stuff. So the only place that I saw, because there's a lot of window wells, all right, you can't have a generator underneath one of your windows, right? The, the only other location would be off of, as you're standing on Blackhawk, facing the house, the right front corner, behind their fence, so what they would consider their backyard area. But they've got plantings there, you know, there's a small decorative tree, and there's stuff that, that would be the only spot, and then they would have to do screening around it, because it's adjoining the street. And yet, that is the opposite corner from where the gas and the electric come into the house, which is the most economical point as well to place it. So I looked at it, and I said, all right, that's the only other location that seems to fit, without it being in the middle of the backyard. So this seemed to be, as the installer, you know, pointed out, the most reasonable location for it. If I can answer his question to you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions for our applicant, other than...
I guess we're, typically, we'd see drawings that have a little bit more detail here, that would show the size of the piece of equipment and the required setbacks. Because now it's, you know, with the required setbacks from the equipment, is it going to fit within that five feet? I don't know.
There's a lot of, it's 10 feet in depth, if you look from the front corner of the house there. I mean, I was, I stood there, I, you know, because it cuts in, cuts up, cuts in, cuts up to the garage, and...
But do we know how much, usually, you know, for...
Like a two-foot...
For an air conditioner, you might, they might require 30 inches on each side, or something. I don't know what it is for, and I couldn't see it in here.
I think it says 18 inches from the wall of the house.
And I use two feet to get the setback.
Oh, you looked at it, and it's okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Two feet, and using the dimensions of the unit that are in the specs.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions for our applicant? No questions. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against the case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board who wants to make a motion. Thank you very much.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 7.73-foot side yard generator setback variation and a 7-decibel sound variation to permit the installation of emergency standby gender generator at 2737 Blackhawk Road in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Mr. Cullings, your motion?
So, you know, we, we get a lot of these, particularly in the spring. And anybody who's ever had water in their basement knows that it's, it's a pain, it's a hardship, if there's a way to deal with it. I think the inconvenience for a neighbor, 30 minutes, one, one day a week, usually kind of mid-morning, on a Tuesday or Wednesday, just, you know, that's really a, a pretty, pretty reasonable, you know, one time a week, time to have this thing cycle and run. So I think it meets the standards of review. I think we've approved a lot of these. I've never had...
the standards of review. I think we've approved a lot of these. I've never had any feedback come back that there's been continuing, I mean, problems with the neighbors, or noise and what have you. So, I, I have no problems.
All right. Initially, when I read the case, before I went up to the site, I was really worried that there was, uh, a, a really bad decision on where this was going to be located, because the language that was from the neighbor that was opposed to this, saying that was wedged between two houses, and it's directly under a bedroom window twice. And going out to the site, I saw that the, it, not only are all the lots fairly wide, 80 feet wide...
Yeah.
That, um, it, there's, uh, a driveway and a garage. I know there's, there might be a bedroom over the garage. However, the, um...
Bedroom window is...
The bedroom window is a little bit farther away, and from the satellite maps, it's about 20 feet away from the generator.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, the language that they use made me think that there was some sort of other plan that, that, um, wasn't, wasn't reality. Um, and then with the issue with the toxic gases that might be, um, flowing into their, their bedroom, again, it was kind of curious to me that their, their garage is underneath the bedrooms, and their, the cars are closer to the bedroom window than this generator's going to be. So, um, and maybe they didn't understand the plan. Usually, letters like this really make me concerned and really look into the, the proposal, but, um, uh, maybe they just didn't understand, and I just want to address, address the letter. Uh, but I'm in fully support of it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I concur with him.
Yeah, with, Ms. Norick. Yeah, I, Mr. Boyer, I, I went out thinking that this was going to be a harder decision, based on the letter we received, too, and, and I felt there was a little bit of an exaggeration to make a point, which we often do ourselves sometimes, so. Uh, but in exploring it, and then, like I mentioned, trying to find an alternative location, uh, it just, it seemed like this was the most reasonable spot. So I, too, will support. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider? Oh, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Schneider. Got carried away. Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So positive recommendation, Village Board meetings on the 14th of May. I suggest you come, just in case, but you should be in and out of here inside a half an hour on the 14th.
Okay.
Meetings at 7:30 in this same room. Thank you very much for coming.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019-Z-12.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, March 20th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. All right. Microphone's open for public comment. If anybody wants to come up to the microphone, make an announcement. Uh, seeing nobody running up, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all for watching.